John Boell.
Here.
And Ken Walton.
Yes, person.
Okay, we have minutes to approve. No, we approved the February 25 minutes, didn't we? It was just the corrections that needed to be done and we approved as corrected.
Yep.
So we don't have to do that again. Okay, very good.
It's the February 4th one that's still outstanding.
You mean March 4th?
No, I mean February. There was that giant meeting.
I don't have the February 4th. Does anyone have February 4th?
No.
Or is it just the March 4th?
I don't see it listed, so it's really only March 4th is what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
Right, but the February 4th was, remember, the big attendance? That's the one that...
Okay, so it still has to be...
Yeah.
We'll do it next week. We'll do it next week. Okay, so we have the March 4th minutes. Are there any corrections or additions that are needed? Let me know when you're set.
Motion.
Oh, you're all set?
Okay, so...
Okay, I need a motion.
Oh, there you are.
You're doing a good job.
Okay. I move that the minutes of the meeting of March 4, 2019, be accepted as presented.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Good.
Ken, what about closing here last week?
The 25th? The 25th? They're all set. We approved it pending the corrections, because there were some corrections with numbers, with the budgets that we had. So it's all set. Okay, this is the time where the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda, or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Would anyone like to make a comment, other than those that are here for a special agenda item? Okay, thank you very much. Which brings us to one of those special agenda items. And that's the appointment of a permanent intermittent officer. He and his family are here with us tonight. Glad to see everyone here. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to read a memo from our town manager, dated today. It's a ratification of appointment of permanent intermittent reserve police officer. Says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Joshua T. Bradley as a permanent intermittent reserve police officer effective March 11, 2019. Mr. Bradley is a graduate of St. Joseph's High School with private sector employment experience as a security officer. He has completed the required Massachusetts Basic Reserve Academy and all pre-employment screening. Chief Coe's recommendation, Mr. Bradley's resume are enclosed. For further information, thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And I will quickly read Chief Coe's memo to our town manager. That's dated March 1 of this year. Says, "Greetings, sir. In December 2018, he gave a conditional offer of employment to Joshua T. Bradley of Dalton for the position of permanent intermittent police officer. After completing the civil service hiring protocol, Joshua was the top name on the civil service list of two candidates willing to accept the appointment. He completed the MPTC Basic Reserve Academy in February. Additionally, he has passed his medical, excuse me, his Massachusetts Police Medical Physical Aptitude Test and Psychological Screening. I am asking for the select board to approve the appointment of Joshua T. Bradley to permanent intermittent officer at its March 11, 2019 meeting. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully, Chief Jeffrey E. Coe." So I'll open it up for comments or questions of the board.
Sounds an outstanding resume.
Yes.
And recommendation.
Yes, I think so too. It's always great when we have a resident town that's joining the force. And it's from experience, it's a good force. I can't say anything bad about it. And you learn a lot. It's a great vocation, and we're glad to have you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything...
We should take a motion.
Well, if you want us to say something...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna...
Okay, sure.
Anything you'd like to say, Josh?
Sure. Just would like to thank the town manager and the board for, you know, considering me. Chief Coe also for putting in for me. It was a lot of work, but I'm excited to get going.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you.
It is very rewarding. It is what you make of it, and you can make a lot of it. I can say that. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion now.
Okay, I move that Joshua T... Yeah, excuse me. Joshua T. Bradley be appointed as a permanent intermittent reserve officer effective March 11, 2019.
I'll second that.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there further discussion or comment? I didn't allow you to say anything, Chief.
Well, you guys did a good job of it, but I feel bad if I didn't say a couple words. I just want you to know Josh worked hard at this. It's something he's wanted. We had an interview with him last time where he was lower on the list, but he persevered and he really gave it all, his all since, what, August job?
Yes, sir.
With a full-time job and two kids and one on the way. Due date was today, so...
Oh, wow.
Daniel cooperated to help us out so he could be here today. So, you know, I'm really excited that he can start now at this point. It was a long process for him.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the family or anything? I'll allow open discussion here if you'd like.
I feel safer.
You do? Yeah. Well, with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna bring him downstairs for the...
Put him to work.
Okay. Take care.
Thank you.
Good luck to all of you.
Yeah. Nice thing.
Thank you.
Great family. May even have a new high school, though.
Chief? Chief? Will you be coming back? Is there nothing else on the...
I don't believe it's on the regular agenda, but if you'd like, then come back, I can.
I don't know what would be...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one more appointment. And that is to the Development and Industrial Commission. And again, I'll read a memo from Mr. Walco. It's dated today. It's a ratification of appointment to the Development and Industrial Commission. Says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Andrew G. Perrinick of 165 High Street to the Development and Industrial Commission for an initial term to expire on June 30, 2019. Mr. Perrinick is the owner of Berkshire Dream Home and a local real estate firm..." Or, I'm sorry, "a local real estate firm. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment."
No, he's here.
No, he isn't.
I move that the town ratified the appointment of Andrew G. Perrinick at 165 High Street to the Dalton Industrial Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Before we vote, I just want to say, I think Andy's a great, great choice for this.
I want to thank John for recruiting him.
Oh, good for you. It's a good thought.
He spoke to me one time, and he was interested in getting involved in government. And with his background in real estate and property...
Yeah.
And economic development, I felt the Dalton Industrial Commission and DRA was the ideal spot for him.
Great.
They concurred, and that board tentatively appointed him last week, submitted to this board's ratification.
You didn't have to strong-arm him or anything like that, right?
No. He's like a young entrepreneur. He's a busy guy.
Yes, he is. He's very busy, and he's always coming. But thank you for doing that. Any further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Which brings us to department budget reviews. And Ken, I'll toss this to you in any order you wish to do it, and we have two department heads here.
Start with our department heads who are here. And first one, I believe, is 510. Board of Health, 510. And then 522 is the Public Health Nurse, as typically handles that. And after that will be 541, which is Council on Aging, and everybody get the budgets in front of them.
510, huh?
510, Board of Health.
510, 522.
Yeah.
And...
541?
Then we'll do 541. Okay. 510 will take a little bit of explaining, because there are two budgets for your consideration, Miss Evi. The first 510, if you have that in front of you. Make sure you have it. See what we're doing here. First 510 is, Ed has been working 30 hours a week for quite a while now. And this is the budget with 30 hours a week, with the 2% increase. Ed has a step increase coming in this fiscal year, so the change in salaries is a little higher. And he's proposing level funding of expenses. So that would be a total bottom line of $45,288, change of about $2,000. There's a second budget. Take a look at it, should be second budget in line. And that has requested consideration, and there's a letter here, to go up to 35 hours, which is, as you know, that's the base hours of our non-represented people generally on this floor, because of the increase in the amount of housing problems that he's had to take on, and the new food inspection code. I've also spoken to him about taking on more responsibility for transfer station. He typically would help me with that anyway, helping to administer the stormwater management program. I mean, John Woffley does a great job, he's overextended, in my opinion. He has all he can do to chair that board, and I think Ed would be a fine administrator in that respect. And other public health type tasks. For instance, I think he'd be a great help to me with our ongoing concerns about wastewater. We have a lot to do with DEP now, the way that infiltration and flow study and the source system evaluation survey and all the marks we have to have the DEP reports we have to provide to them. So with that, Ed, would you like to make any comments?
Just Ken summarized it pretty well. Last couple years, there's been a steady increase in housing complaints. Looking forward, I'm going to talk to the board out about considering passing a regulation where landlords will have to take a permit to the Board of Health. And the purpose of that would be to kind of get control over the number of rental units in town, do some pre-inspections, and try to reduce the amount of complaints that we're getting.
When you get these complaints, are they from the renters?
The tenants, yes.
The tenants?
So, just, I haven't studied it, but my impression is that there's probably more rental houses in town. As our rental stock is going up, there's that corresponding increase in complaints. So, that's the main reason I'm requesting that. I have a question.
Do the complaints in general have merit?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's additional five hours a week? And it sounds as, at least to me, and I've had informal conversations in the past with Ed about his duties, and he seems to be, while the increase of his activity is obvious. Yeah. So, your feelings on this, Ken?
Yeah, I'm recommending 35 hours, and we would adjust his job description as appropriate to accommodate the new duties.
Okay. Comments, questions?
I'm fine.
Thank you, bless you. Ed, do you still work for other municipalities?
Yes.
Will that interfere or encroach on your being basically a full-time, hours-wise employee at the Town of Dalton?
It's not gonna impact me a lot. It's only five hours, so I think I can balance it pretty well. I talked to Ken about how we can work it in, and I think it'll be okay.
But the Town of Dalton definitely has your priorities.
Could have 35 hours.
I did notice that you've been working on a lot of a multi-housing thing, particularly that issue on Dalton Division Road, which seems like it was kind of onerous, but it's coming to a resolution. I'm certain that you were involved in that, and it was a lot of difficult work.
That actually took 10 months. It's unusual that it would take that long, but it is an example of how housing issues they take an incredible amount of time. Went to court seven times to get that resolved, so there's a few other ones pending as well that we need to...
Yeah, so Ed now works Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So within those four days, we'll simply add hours, we'll talk about what the schedule is.
What are your hours on Friday, Ed?
Typically, it's four hours, 12 to 4.
So you're gonna expand hours to Wednesdays, or...
Then those four days, we'll add five hours.
Oh, okay, you're just gonna split it up?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Well, the board's pleasure on which budget to approve? The increased budget or the...
Yeah, I just couldn't seem to locate mine. I must have done something wrong here, but we got the second one. I just don't have this one. I had the other one. Anyway, I'm disposed to approve budget number two?
The number you want to...
The...
Well, they're both 510.
The 35-hour, the 35-hour budget versus the 30?
That would be the second budget.
It's on the second page?
On the second page.
Of your...
Yeah.
All right. 510. For the bottom line, 52,515?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. I would move that the board tentatively, well, it's not a motion.
Yeah.
Well, it should be, because this is different than tentatively approving, like we usually deal with just a regular budget.
If you would like to, we can do that.
No, I'll just, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the board approve budget of 52,515 for the Board of Health for fiscal 2020.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ed. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, we'll take a formal vote then, since it's a motion.
Yeah. Because this is kind of...
Yeah.
Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. It's in here, huh? So Public Health Nurse?
Public Health Nurse. Go, remember that.
Yeah.
Public Health Nursing duties are now being provided through the Berkshire Public Health Alliance administered by the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. And they've requested a 2.5% increase, and it's very modest. $138.
So this is our share?
Yeah. Any comments on that, Public Health Nursing?
I think I put on the budget that the Board of Health approved it, but at the last meeting, I didn't have a form, so I'm confident that the Board of Health would agree with the increase they requested.
Okay.
TA?
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Yep.
Okay, the next one's gonna be Council on Aging. I'm gonna abstain from a debate or vote on this.
Can we do this then?
Yes, you can.
Well, we're gonna vote anyways, the TA's...
Right, okay, but I just want to say I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Okay. This is the usual budget with the increases of 2% for the staff, and we also have a $2,400 increase in expenses. And I'll explain it to you briefly, and then maybe Kelly has something to say. But I want you to turn to the second page of this, because that's the sources and uses of funds. Council on Aging is one of two departments that get significant additional monies from other sources, the other being the library. You can see that the state grant and revolving funds add another $50,000 approximately to the budget, almost $60,000 to their budget. I just want you to see how that is spread among the various line items. These line items are the same as the line items on the general fund budget, which is the first page. So you can see how the money is being spent by the Council on Aging, all of the funds. Now, we've had to make significant increases here in maintenance and service agreements. Now that we've redone our HVAC system up there, remember, we put in new ducts and controllers and so forth, we want to have a service agreement with the entity that provides that, is CTC. And heretofore, they've been kind of gratis, giving us some help, but we feel it's more important to have a service agreement, which would be a backup of, it's all computer-driven, and there's sophisticated software there. Part of that is backup, part of that is just having a little reserve so that we can call them on-site. So rather than signing a formal agreement, which obligates us to pay so much, we'll be on-call when we need them, and we'll pay them a certain amount of money to fix the system when we need it. So that's one big change. The other change is in building repairs and maintenance. The janitorial service that we've had in Town Hall has been working over in the senior center now, doing an excellent job, so we're providing that down below in building repairs and maintenance. That's count 5431. So the other change is in count 5242, and this one is in 5231, 5431, I'm sorry. Now, we've been able to reduce expenses up above, the very first line item is electricity. And in virtue of the efficient, more efficiently running system, now that we've fixed it, we're, Kelly and I, think it's easy enough to take $1,000 off that line item. Similarly, we've taken $300 off the heating line item as well. I think those are all the changes. Kelly, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think that was it. There are a couple of things that I'm anticipating, though. We're having some issue with our lights, because the lights that were installed in the building when the building was built can't be bought anymore, they're not making them anymore. So we're planning on stockpiling them while we can, but we're gonna have to look at swapping out the light fixtures that are the recess lights in the ceilings. And apparently, when the outer doors, the emergency exit doors, were installed, they were never painted, they only have that face coat on them. So they're swelling, and that probably explains why they're just so difficult to open and close. So we may have to look at replacing those doors. So I have that worked in there, too. But hopefully, now that the big problems are taken care of, let's, I'm hoping that we'll see those lines go down, too, in the future.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Going back to the employment section of the document. Back in, probably two or three months ago, we had the board authorize a position for, I think it was four hours a week, to assist with the meal site preparation?
Yeah.
And we advertised for it, and at one point in time, we had no lucky security employees. Has that changed?
No, we have found one, I'm just waiting for her physical and her Cory.
Is that an appointment by the board, or...
No, it's just a hire.
Is hired by?
Yeah.
Good, Kelly.
That's a good question, John. You can see down the bottom, the stipend is...
Yeah.
Right down the last line item under the salaries.
Yeah, the $1,300.
Yeah.
$1,300, so...
And some of them come out of the state.
Hopefully, somebody will be on the job soon, huh? Good.
I'm hoping.
And here's a question down here, full map. You got all the different maintenance agreements, computers, heating and cooling, CTC, Hood Pro, all lumped into one. So this figure is for maintenance contracts for all kinds of equipment at the facility, right? Then down here is building repairs, and up here is equipment repairs.
Well, the problem is different.
Yeah.
The building is actually the physical structure.
The building, outside stuff, yeah.
We have to replace the doors.
This is okay. All right.
That would come out of that line.
Sure. Hey, looks good to me, Ed.
It's fine, yeah.
TA it?
Yes, TA.
We support the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, now we can...
Well, while Kelly is here, can we do the other business?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can we just skip ahead? This is the grant. I'm also gonna abstain from discussion, and I'll just moderate as for what you're gonna do to vote.
All right.
Okay?
Go back to the thing here?
It's the...
Accepted the 2500?
Yes.
John, I think, I read the minutes, and I read what your position is.
Yeah.
And it's admirable. I think you've done the right thing. So I think until we have a quorum, we should...
We were discussing this earlier, and if, with the quorum that we have tonight, if I abstain from discussion and from vote, and abstain the vote, it is okay.
With only two of us?
We have a quorum of three. I am going to abstain.
I'm okay with it.
If you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. We discussed it this afternoon, we looked things up on the...
Hopefully, there's two I-votes and one abstentions, so a majority...
And after reviewing the guidelines from the Ethics Commission, we are okay.
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 With that in mind, I will move that the Town of Dalton accept $2,500 from Berkshire Life Charitable Foundation dedicated to Dalton Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
This is very generous.
Kelly, is there anything you'd like to say about the grant?
Well, it's Berkshire Life Charitable Trust does an annual donations to nonprofits throughout the county, and we've been applying for the last few years to help support the Council on Aging band and sure extension. But as one of our band drivers, of course, so we're very grateful that they help support the band.
Kelly, have they done this in the past?
Yeah.
Kind of an annual thing?
And I think it's important that we okay this as soon as possible before they change their mind.
Good move, Ed. Any more discussion?
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along.
Okay. We have, shoot, we should have budget 123.
Ooh.
Town Manager.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Okay, there's salaries of $151,111. That's the town manager, administrative assistance, temporary clerical and vacation replacement, expenses of $8,309. No change from last year, for a total of $159,420.
Ken, it's important to make the point that the salary, 151,111,1 is a combined departmental salary.
Right.
Yeah, and we've always had trouble with that issue.
Any questions for Mr. Walter? TA?
TA.
Next, we have Department 159, tax title foreclosures. This is a very small allocation we have, because if we foreclose, foreclose the right of redemption to fall on tax titled properties, then we have to maintain those properties. And keep a small amount in there. You can see that we, in the past couple of years, we've only spent very little, but you go back about three years, and we spent a lot. So we can keep getting it in there. We have one property in the midst of foreclosure, one that's likely to go to foreclosure, and I asked Don to list the amount of properties in tax title. You see, there are 25 properties. Nine are lands of low value, which simply means they're probably not worth going after because of the cost of foreclosure, so they'll hang out there. So we have 11 that are possibly properties we would take control of in the future if they don't pay. They're for homeowners on payment plans now, and those are moving ahead. If they pay up, then they come off of the schedule.
Okay. TA?
TA.
Next is the Forest Warden, and our fire chief traditionally has been appointed the Forest Warden, and that's his budget with a 2% stipend increase and the expenses level funded.
Okay. Any questions? TA?
Next is Streetlights, Department 424. And this is a very interesting budget, because we are estimating a decrease of almost $40,000. You see that? And that is not due to the LEDs, streetlights being installed. That's due merely to the fact that they're on the so-called S2 rate schedule, because the town now owns the lights. And we haven't had enough experience yet. I don't think we're gonna start seeing the discount for LEDs until the bill in March, because it took time to, you know, they were only installed in January, and there's some reconciliation process that went on. So we're not gonna see a discount until March. So we're gonna see a further savings beyond what we're showing here, but we don't know what that is, so we're being conservative.
So this is just the mere fact that we own those
We're not paying any rental.
Units on the pole.
No rental, no sur, no, no other kinds of fees.
So this is rental. It's not necessarily energy use, taking into consideration energy use.
No, yes, it's a decrease in the rental costs we're paying to EverSource for the lights.
Ken, how much, refresh my memory, how much did we pay?
For total?
For, yeah.
$91,000, wasn't it?
No, the lights, the lights.
Oh, the lights themselves to buy?
I think we paid EverSource something like $270,000.
Yeah.
But we got a grant.
That was paid for a very grand time.
Yes, yes. We really, this was really a good deal for the town.
We paid zero.
This was a good deal for the town.
Yes.
The residents of Dalton paid zero.
Okay, looks good. So will you, we won't know until after the first quarter what's gonna happen with the energy use.
Yeah, we'll get some experience. There is a rate schedule for the LEDs, but we don't know what that's gonna be, you know?
Okay.
Just don't have any experience.
Well, obviously, you'll update us on her.
Oh, we're talking about electricity, Ken. Have we seen returns from our cow power thing yet?
Nothing's far as I go. I gotta get back and check them.
Did they tell us, January?
I think they said it would be late March before they were gonna get back to us and see what the status is. I mean, obviously, many months late. And I mean, and the fact that it's emitting methane in the meantime, as I understand it, just into the air, is a really bad, bad development, with no electricity being generated.
And remember, it's through no fault of their own. They just haven't gotten
Yes, yes, but bottom line, it's just a bad plan, whatever happened there.
It's similar to, well, not similar, similar, but as for the hookup?
Yes, that we've had several times.
It's similar, it's similar to what the school district was going through, and they agreed, they made that agreement with that firm that was also vying for our business long before we even started. And they're still waiting for a hookup, and they're hoping that it's gonna be this month. So I guess it's the nature of the beast, so to speak, as for when it gets put on the grid. So, well, eventually it will. Eventually it will. So with the streetlights, we're good?
Yeah.
With the TA?
Yes, with the TA.
Okay.
All right, just know for the record that our town accountant, Sandy O'Veil, prepared many of these budgets for me, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
She does a thorough job.
Yes, she does.
The next budget should be 433 landfill closure and monitoring. And as you know, this is one of the, this is one of the items that we've had to do additional work on for the DEP, and that has been helped, and we're expecting DEP to do that.
I, I'm sorry.
Sorry for that.
Obviously, we don't own the Warren landfill, but we are getting costs associated with the Warren. You see, I don't quite understand that. We don't own it, and we're getting costs to the town, because they aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, we landfilled it. The town landfilled, and then we were, the town was responsible for capping it. And the DEP continues to monitor, and when they see something they don't like, they come back to the town to fix it. There's probably little or no chance that we could collect from the Warren family for these costs, because the property itself isn't tax titled. They're not even paying the taxes. So, and I think many years ago, although I can't say this for certain, I think there was supposed to be a cost in the town, I remember. I think it was a cost-sharing agreement for landfill closure, and the town never got paid for that either.
Someone was under a mandate, our lease ran out, it was a 10-year lease that ran out, under a mandate by the DEP to close that landfill. And I was at the Board at the time, and my position was, it was owner's responsibility. We were merely a leasing, and there were other major users of that landfill. And so we were told, or eventually how it was settled, we'll pay for it, we'll borrow a million dollars, and the other parties will contribute to the cost. Well, I'm guessing that that never happens, and we got stuck for the total bill. I think it's just about paid off, or maybe it is, Ken.
Yes.
The bond is retired?
The bond's retired, a couple of years now.
Yeah, there was, E.G. Jones was in business, and they were a major user over there, Korean company, of course.
Yeah.
And hey, the Warrens owned it. They just leased it to the town, but that's not the way it ended up.
That's a long, sad story.
Yeah, it is.
We'll be dealing with that for a very long time.
So...
Again, here on this thing here, you know, it's down substantially, but only because at the last minute, on 6/25/18, we added $16,000 at a special town meeting for the barrel removal.
Right.
So the barrel removal now isn't in there anymore, hence the significant drop from 29,800 to 14.
Right, and we only had to spend about $3,000 of the $16,000, because the Dalton Redevelopment Authority, with its brownfields money, agreed to contribute the lion's share, and put up $20,000, and the balance was paid for out of this line item. You'll see, we've been funding this particular account by transferring money from a continuing appropriation. It was the residual when the money was borrowed. What wasn't expended closing the landfill went into a special account, so we've been able to transfer money from that account each year to pay for this continuation of the monitoring. We've got about one more year to go on.
Any further questions for the council?
We have DRA that contribute the money to remove the barrels. They're really nice guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, next we have the transfer station. Department 434, and our contract with Republic runs out, and I've already made an exploratory call. I've gotta follow that up to their municipal representative. We're estimating, Sandy's estimated a 3% increase in this budget. And overall, it'll only go up by 1.08%. So the total budget is expected to be $21,805.
When's the contract expire?
June 30.
June 30?
Yeah. And we want to start talking to them now about taking more. We have it in here. You see, there's a line in for commercial in here. That was put in years ago, when we tried to have the commercial haulers dump the recyclables at our transfer station. Never quite worked out the way we wanted it to, so we wanted to give that another go and improve the transfer station facility so that it can accept the recyclables.
We'll have to do some type of construction over there to do this?
We might. It may, it may be very simple. It may be as simple as allowing one day, like Thursday, when residents aren't at the transfer station, to have the haulers come in and make sure they can dump. You know, we always see two boxes if you've been up there. The second box you see down further was actually supposed to be for the commercial hauler, so we've got two boxes. We may be able, the papers are a problem, because the commercial hauler can't dump all the papers and boxes into that little square. We may be able to have them dump where we put the garbage now. That's cleared off, and now we have another container, so that the compactor can compact the papers and push them in. We don't know yet. Those are just a couple of ideas we've had about how to make this thing work.
Okay.
Ken, just to follow up on the subject, did the Board of Health, I know they had a proposal before them, to require private haulers to separate or recycle, or at least separate them. It wasn't determined what to do with it, but did they adopt that policy?
No, the regulation, the proposed hadn't been adopted. We kind of, that was put on hold until we can negotiate with Republic and see if we can have the...
See what you can do with this.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we'd be putting the cart for the horse a little bit. Now, instead of taking a regulatory hammer out to the haulers, we're, you know, just trying to work with the town. We figured it was better to work with the haulers, try to get the system in place before we put the regulations in place.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
That makes real sense. From what I understand, from Scott over there, there's only one hauler, a very small hauler, that brings his recyclables over there.
That's right.
The rest of them are, they're big. They just mix it in and take you to Pittsfield.
Right.
So it would be a major turnaround in the industry in Dalton to bring the recyclables over here.
The thing that's worrisome a little bit is that we used to get money for recyclables at the Murph, and that we no longer are getting much of anything, but we may have to, in fact, pay in the future to get the recyclables.
But don't we have to get the, don't we have to get the homeowner, not the homeowner necessarily, but businesses and, say, apartment complexes to recycle rather than have just a dumpster? They have to get on board as well.
We're trying to do that by the regulations. Get everybody on board.
Yeah, I figure at least 50% of the homeowners, single homeowners, don't recycle. They just put their stuff, trash out there at the curb, and one of these local haulers picks it up.
If they have a hauler picking it up.
Yeah, so I think that's the right place to start. Now, Ken, in this proposed regulation to the Board of Health about recycling, would they be required a hauler to bring it to our transportation station? I mean, it might be more amenable, or...
I'm trying to remember.
To bring it to somewhere else?
It's been a while, it's been a while since. So what we're trying to do is make it an incentive. Because if they can bring it here, if they're in Dalton, they can bring it here. If they unload it, and they don't have to pay the transport costs to go somewhere else.
I think you're heading in the right direction here, working with these guys. There's only not that many of them, four or five.
Yeah.
But they range from giant nationwide companies like Republic
Right.
to Dave Bowman, a one-man band.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, about one size fits the all, but it's a tough problem.
It is.
Okay, we're good with that?
Yes.
TA?
Yes.
Okay, the next budget you should have is 915. That's life insurance. It's a life insurance program for active and retired employees. And Don Fahey did an excellent job of looking very carefully at this, and she's come up with almost $2,500 in savings.
Sounds good. Yeah, TA?
TA.
Okay. The final budget, I think it's the final budget. The final budget is 945, town insurance. Again, Don did an excellent job of scrutinizing this carefully, and has come up with $40,000, almost $41,000 in savings by looking carefully at actuels. And you can see that we've been able to lower SNF for workers' comp, and our property liabilities significantly lower them. We've had to increase the deductibles down below, because we've seen an increase in the expenses for deductibles. And we have storage tank liability. It's a small amount, but we have to do, for the past couple of years, we've had to have a policy on our fuel storage tanks.
So that includes storage tanks, like our oil tank in the building here, and...
No, just, I think it covers just the highway.
Just the highway gas tank, or gas and diesel?
Gas and diesel.
Okay.
Thinking for buried. I remember, I think it's just for buried.
Okay.
Might even save more next year when the school's gone.
Yeah. I don't know if we're renewing those.
Oh.
I don't think we're renewing.
Were they there?
The tanks are gone now.
Too late.
Did they actually get the tanks out of there?
No, the oil's gone, I'm not sure.
The oil's gone, yeah. I think the tanks are gonna be an issue trying to get them out. It's in a concrete bunker, I think.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay, dope. TA on that one, too, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
We can go backwards, just a minute or two, and look at where we are in the schedule. Next week will be our, unless something unexpected comes up, next week's our last special meeting for the budget. I've, and you can see what's on the agenda for next week's budget. Try to get as many done as possible, so we won't have that many to do next week. I've, again, provided the draft warrant. Now, the warrant is unchanged from last week. I just wanted to put it out there in front of you. Next week, we should try to finalize the warrant.
Anything out here, Ken, the proposed warrant? Did you think it might be troublesome?
No, it's pretty much the usual suspects. I think probably the only important, well, there's a couple of, there's one new one, is Article 1, just to remind you again, because our contract with the Murph is running out. And DEP is gonna be out doing a competitive bid process for a new 10-year agreement, and that has to be approved by town meeting, because we can only approve three-year retirement agreements. So DEP is recommending that we get a warrant article approving a 10-year contract this year, with the appropriations coming next year. And that is really the only new article. These are the usual articles.
We just have to come to a conclusion, too, about the one ballot question.
Right, but we wanted to do the ballot question now. And that's it, we finish. As you review that, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me during the week. You also can see the budget. As we put in the real numbers, we're getting closer to what the truth is for this fiscal year.
Looking better every week.
Yeah, so we won't, and of course, we don't set the tax rate until the fall. That's when we actually adjust our revenues to set the rate, but this is as close as we can get at the present time.
Well, I was commenting to Ken, from the last week that we did this, the, on page five, the tax increase last week was 11 cents, and this coming week is 30.
Jumped it.
And that's because of the debt? And that's because of the debt?
I think it's primarily because I, although I've put in, I haven't bolded those because you're not going to look at debt service till next week. I've put in the numbers, let them check them, you know, we'll be reviewing it this week. But on page 2, towards the bottom, you see the debt and interest. And I put the numbers in there that Dawn has come up with, but again, we'll check it, but that's up significantly and that's why it's driving the tax rate.
Okay, you got anything else for us, or?
That's it, Mr. Chen.
And does anyone have any specific questions for Ken before we move on? Okay, moving on. We have a resolution to accept another grant and this, I think this is the second year of this, isn't it?
Yes.
It is the second year of this. Hang on, I'll organize myself here. And this is the Robert J. Fox Revocable Trust and is specifically to be used for programs benefiting youth. But before we go on and discuss it, why don't we have a motion?
I move that the Town of Dalton accept the most generous grant from the Robert J. Fox Revocable Trust Company in the amount of $17,600 to be used to benefit youth programs.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is made in second. Discussion on this?
I'm pretty sure you're right, John, that we ran across this before. What did we do before? How did we funnel it into the youth?
That's, that was my exact question is how do we use it? Because I forgot.
I forgot.
And we haven't spent it yet. This goes into an account and it can be appropriated out, we spend it without further appropriation.
Was it the same amount as...
No, I think it was...
It was less, wasn't it?
It was less, $2,000 maybe.
This particular amount, and I was kind of confused with that reading the letter. The actual total amount of the trust is 880,000.
Correct.
We have, our 2% share is 17.6. But is that the, is this then going to be the last time that we get a gift from the Fox Foundation or the Fox Trust?
I think there will be more because it says it's a partial distribution, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. Well, as it is, so we'll put it back in the, we'll put it in the account that we...
Go back in the account.
We created last year. And I think that's the big question is how we spend it.
Yeah. If we ever get to actually develop in this park on North Mountain, could these funds be used on that project?
They can't, let's see, you can't use it for building, can't, must be used, not to be used for salaries or building maintenance, construction or renovation. So we'd have to look more closely at the terms of the trust. I mean, offhand, one example of how it might be used, you know, the money we appropriate for the CRA, there's a whole section that goes to the youth sports league.
Yes.
I think that would be an appropriate use of it offhand.
And it sets reducing our budget?
Huh?
And it sets reducing our budget to the CRA?
Might be able to, or we may be able to increase it, you know. But that's the kind of, I think that's the kind of activity.
In other words, a program, not construction or development.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's very generous.
Yes, sure is. Can you live down in Greenwich Park, John?
Excuse me?
I don't, you know, I want to say it is, but I'm not 100% sure.
Neither, but I seem to remember.
By the end of Pleasant View Drive.
Yeah, Pleasant View Drive.
I'm pretty sure.
Is that the same John?
Yes.
Okay. I have only met him once or twice in his lifetime, I guess.
He was an active member of our finance committee for several years.
Was he?
Yeah.
I shall continue with the school committee more. What, Colona? Building committee reports, school building committee reports. Start out with, I'll start with the school committee. And this coming, this coming week, which there's a meeting this Thursday of the school committee, the main, one of the main things that's going to be discussed is the final budget adoption. What was approved and what the, the last meeting was, was a public hearing on the tentative budget. There's like four levels of this budget. The main, the main change with the final budget is that our assessment went down further. The tentative budget, it was .45%. Now it's down to .21%.
Really?
So I don't know how that will affect our overall budget. Financial was sitting over at the other desk, we'll find that out later on for our next meeting, I would think. Our capital assessment, that remains the same. The overall operating budget for the district is up .87%, so it's minimally up. Future meetings, as I said, if I can get the schedule, I have the schedule, there's some, there it is. It's more or less going back to a regular schedule, but as I said, the, there's a meeting on the 14th of the school committee and they will be voting on the final budget. As well as from what I, from what I understand and what you can see in your mail, in the mailbox in our office, they'll be discussing the Covington withdrawal matter. Because there's kind of new movement with that. And, you know, just review the documents that we have on that. I'm not really going to comment on that because it hasn't been discussed. I've received letters and, and reports on it, but in all fairness, I'm not going to, I'm not really going to discuss it, only to say that it appears that it will be gone over this coming meeting, at the, at the school committee meeting.
Maybe a real legal question there.
What do you mean?
Can Covington, I don't want to predispose the argument, but can Covington be held responsible for a section of the capital cost if they exit the district?
Yes. You mean as for, if the, if the new school is voted in?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I can see a court case coming over that.
Well...
And that's a legal opinion.
That's there.
They're responsible for capital cost.
From my understanding is, from my understanding is, say if the new school was built, voted on and built tomorrow, and they had X number of students in that, in the building going to a corner and they were still a member of the district, that they're responsible for that debt, for the length of the bond, whether they're in the district or whether they're not, or whether they withdraw. They're responsible. Again, that will be, that will be clearly defined this Thursday.
Good.
And, or at least as, as the, yeah, district agreement, I'm not using the proper terms, but the district agreement goes how it goes. I believe that's, that's how it's worded in the, in the agreement. And that is what's in debate. And you'll see with the letter that's in our mailbox as well, from the Town of Covington.
Nobody saw that or not?
It just came in today.
But that's a, they, if they actually, and we discussed it before, if they actually take any concrete steps, like a town meeting vote?
What's been voted?
They send the citizens of Covington to withdraw from the...
Yes, what's been voted on so far, which I can say, is that Covington did, did vote at town meeting to exit the district or leave the district. The school committee, a long time ago, voted to allow them to leave. But then there, then there are a couple more votes. There's a vote of the towns, whether the towns will let them leave. And then there's a vote of Desi, whether Desi will say, yeah, it's okay, you leave. Because from my understanding as well, especially with what, how Desi makes a determination is if Covington has a plan for their students. Where are the students going to go if you're not in the district? Basically, that's the type of plan they're looking for.
Who, Desi?
Desi, yeah, Desi is. And, but there's a, there's a lot of, there's still some decisions or steps to go through before they will be allowed to leave. And even though the school committee and their town has said, yeah, we can leave or you can leave, it's not really near any type of final decision at this point in time.
But that is an interesting statement in effect, if, this could take another two years to straighten out and they are hell bent on leaving.
Yes.
And they do leave.
Yes.
And the new school opens, they're on the hook for 30 years to pay their proprietary capital.
Yeah, that's my understanding is.
That's a fascinating agreement.
It is.
I can see a whole type of court case over that.
I don't think they'll be quick in writing a check to us.
Well, and the issue is still now, as you'll read in the letter, the issue still now is the OPEB liability.
Yeah.
Whose, whose figures are you going to go by? The towns or the districts? And, you know, they're this far apart.
Understandable. It's kind of a minor issue, pales a comparison to being on the hook for a 30-year bond issue and not being able to utilize the services.
Both, both have their financial impacts, obviously. I'm really not sure which one would be more, to tell you the truth, over, over the course of time. But again, as you said, John, it's, it, there's a lot of questions. It could be, it could be litigation. Who knows?
Fascinating scenario.
Yeah, it is.
As well, I'll have to make about that to Mr. Adams, who's replied to Mr. Adams's letter to the editor.
Yeah.
That was all the Dalton select board's fault, that we manipulated the...
They didn't say the select, he didn't say the select.
Yeah, he did. He didn't say it was only, we were involved.
I thought he just used the term Dalton.
I think he gave his 50% credit for being responsible.
But he did cast that we, and manipulated the situation. We also were responsible for scheduling the election on Saturday, to press the vote. I just thought it was humorous, that's all.
There were, yeah, there were a lot of things I disagreed with and as the information came out, I don't believe that that was correct. However, I really don't want to get into a debate on that one. Okay. But that's my report on the, on the school committee. Now with the building committee, as you know, the, and I'm just going to give you a quick rundown of the meetings that we had on 3-5 and 3-7. Mr. Parnas had a fantastic article summarizing Dalton and Windsor's meetings. And it was good, you have the questions there and the answers that, that worked out. Well, a lot of people commented on that, that it was, it was good to read those, but I kind of digress here. But anyways, thank you for that. But in the, in the Dalton meeting, there were about 70 to 80 people there. That was on the 5th of March. And in the Windsor meeting, there were, I believe about 35, somewhere between 30 and 40 there maybe at the Windsor meeting, I think would be a good guess. And all the meetings had basically the same type of questions, you know, what the costs were going to be, the financing, accreditation, tax rates, how's the town's going to pay for it? The building makeup, why is it designed this way versus that way, especially the auditorium? That was kind of a discussion point. And then there was, there were two other meetings on the 7th, Hinsdale and Beckett. And Hinsdale had about 15 people and Beckett had about 25, from what I remember of the notes. I was not, I was, I was not in attendance at those meetings. But again, the questions were of similar nature at those meetings as well. On the 6th, in between those two meetings, obviously there was the, well, not obviously, but for people who didn't know, there was the Dalton COA debate between Bill Rosin and Tom Callahan. Chris Canning was the moderator. And that was well attended as well. It was about 45 people, I did a rough count at the meeting. There could have been a little bit more. The debate centered, as far as I remember, or from what I could see, centered around what the costs, the payments, what the steps would be after the April 6 meeting, depending on which way it would go. It was a different type of meeting because it was a debate. It wasn't an information, necessarily information gathering, although the information was given out, but it was debated on either side, what was good, what was bad, pros and cons, obviously.
I wasn't at the meeting, however, I watched it on cable TV. It now being rebroadcast, was rebroadcast last night also.
Yeah.
It was very interesting because it seemed like everyone sort of agreed, something has to be done and it's going to be millions of dollars.
Yeah, you know, that's a good point because you're absolutely right, absolutely.
And that's what I came across with. There was just a sort of a general agreement, this is going to be very expensive.
Either way.
It's going to be many millions of dollars. And so really it was a question of, do you do something with the old school to bring it up, which is billions, or you start over?
Sure. It's millions either way.
Right.
And, you know, if you read, it was funny, if you read the article, I don't remember who wrote it, it was in the Eagle about Monument Mountain. From my knowledge of being in these meetings, you could have replaced CB RSD with Monument Mountain. And it was like the same story that they're going through right now. It's, it's really amazing. So that was telling in and of itself. It's a, it's a very, well, it's, it's a very important issue to decide and it is also something that's very personal with each household and with each individual as for, for how they decide on how they're going to vote. So, and I think that, that also got across in, in the meetings as well. There's no additional community events scheduled at this time. There's no school building committee meetings scheduled prior to the vote. I'm sure after the vote, either way that it'll take place, there will be meetings posted and scheduled. Mr. Osters told me that people have been looking for the videos pertaining to school building committee and the Wakona issue. They are on YouTube, but you got to search for them under Dalton Community Television. Correct, John?
Yes.
Okay.
You're not going to broadcast them on your regular 1301, but you haven't yet, right? Oh, yeah. They don't broadcast. They have, okay. I hadn't seen them.
Is there, is there a schedule?
I would have to ask.
Okay. Okay. But if people are looking to view them on YouTube, that's where, that's how you search them, I guess. And let me just quickly. Yeah, I guess that's about, that's about it. Unless you have any specific questions for me.
I've got one specific thing, this A. John, regarding the prospective election on April 6th, that's a Saturday.
Yes.
The polls are open from 10 till 4.
Yes.
Very limited.
Yeah.
I mean, Daltonians are, as other towns are used to, polls being open from 8 till 8, 7 to 6 and, you know, but that's a short span, but people just got to be aware.
I don't remember why it was six hours. I do remember why it was split 10 to 4 because the people did have to work until 3 on a Saturday, like it's kind of a split shift. Well, you never know what job you have. You could be working a 7 to 3 or whatever. You'd still have that hour to come and vote. I believe that's one of the reasons why it was set that way.
Yeah.
I know that town, town balloting always has start, if it's just a town election, it always starts at 10 a.m.
State elections start at 8.
State elections start at 8.
Yeah.
But I can't give you an answer as for why it's six hours because I don't remember. I absolutely don't remember.
So it's important for us to... So it's important for us to communicate.
Yes, it is.
To the populace, that this is the short window of opportunity.
What, what we, what we should do is have it on our announcements, so that it's, um, every week that we tell people where it is and when it is.
And I'm sure it'll be on our cable TV.
Yes, it will, I'm sure it will. Any other questions for me? Okay. Thank you. The, uh, should've, should've talked about this while Kelly was, I haven't even spoken to her about this. But, oh, no, I have, because the idea came up in one of my meetings, um, at the senior center with, with residents, um, about considering holding some of our select board meetings at the senior center. Um, not, not ev- like every other one, maybe we could do one every quarter, something like that, but I'd just like to get your ideas on.
I think it's a very good idea. I, I myself would have much easier time getting into the senior center than going up those stairs.
Right.
Um, and I know that other people have mentioned to me, uh, that they have trouble going up those stairs. But I actually think we should really consider about having the, uh, like, say, the, always the second meeting of, of the month that we're having, uh, be at the senior center. I, I think you really need to have a regular schedule, so people can get familiar with that, and we, you could schedule the agenda items that are most relevant, uh, to that group of people, uh, on, on the second meeting. So, uh, I think perhaps when we have everyone here, we could discuss that possibility, that the second regular scheduled meeting of the select board be at the senior center.
I agree. To, to an extent, the only thing that, I, you know, keep it on a regular schedule, people will know to go.
Yes.
Okay, it's the second, it's the second meeting of the month that's gonna be at the senior center. It's easy to remember, something like that.
The second regularly scheduled, uh.
Right. Um, I just wish that we had a live feed down. We don't, do we, John?
Uh, which, it's possible. I'll have to look into it.
Oh, you.
We are doing the internet, so, you know, it's conceivable.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'll do it from there.
That's right. Could you find out, let me know? The next meeting, we can talk about this a little bit longer.
Yes.
A little bit more, but, uh, if we had live broadcasts, that would make it even better.
Oh, I absolutely think that a live broadcast is very, uh, very important, and I, I was in, in the back of my mind, that, that was a real possibility, that you will be able to do that from there.
I hope, but I would find out.
Okay. Uh, it is to, that's why I wanted to talk to, uh, our, our COA director about this, to get an idea of, as you were saying, topics that we can add on to the agenda during that particular meeting, that would be more, um, related to, uh, our elder population, or
Like me, yes.
People that, people that use the senior center, you know, the frequent time. Um, we'll have to work it out, but I, I think, I think we can, we can do something, and, uh, it would be beneficial largely for accessibility.
Yes.
For many.
Yes, because I suspect that next year, we deal once again with the cost of putting an elevator in here, and with all the other costs, that we'll find that the elevator project will be postponed again.
It'll be way down here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your thoughts, John?
Hey, I'm inclined to concur, for one, the handicapped accessible issue, it's huge. I mean, we really gotta do something about the town hall, but it's probably not gonna happen in the future. But don't forget the parking. Parking, when you have big crowds, is always an issue out here. Yeah, last week, I had to drive around the block to park my car.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a big issue. But, uh, what I would say to this board, I concur, with the second meeting of the month being held down there, uh, we should try to make a decision before the town, annual town report goes to press. Because what it says in the, uh, town report, that the meetings are held twice a month, second and fourth Monday, in this room.
Yeah.
That's a very good point.
And, uh, you know, we could always get around that by saying, we're gonna have a special meeting down there, which we've done in the past. But, uh, if we could, uh, get the rest of the board to concur on the next meeting, and, uh.
We would have to do it then, because the deadline.
Yeah, and time for her to get that, in, and then start in July, for a one-year test run or something. Give it a whole year to shake out, yeah, winter, summer, spring.
Department heads had to have their reports in by the thirteenth. When do we have to have everything organized before printing? Is it the thirteenth?
I, I think next Monday is the latest.
Ooh, yeah, so we're really up against the, uh, clock here.
Well, once you do that, we have a major, we won't make a decision by, probably by next Monday. But we could delete, that, the meetings will be still on the second and fourth, but don't say that they're gonna always be in this room.
That might be wise.
Yeah.
If we can't get it in before printing.
Right, just delete the, uh, the held in the Callahan room.
You agree?
Oh, yes, that's a good point, yeah, that would.
Can we make a note of that, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, just don't put, designate the location.
But still, they'll be the second and fourth, and.
And, uh, I'll have it on the agenda for, uh, next, next Monday, the eighteenth, and we'll make a decision then.
Perhaps you should ask Kelly to join us again.
That would be a good idea.
Maybe, uh, double check, uh, double check with, uh, Judy, our administrative assistant, and see, you know, sometimes there's a wiggle room. A department head asks to submit his whole report, blah, 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 but just to make a small change, typo change, might have more latitude or leeway.
Well, it's on our, is it on the schedule, or has it gone to the printer?
Yeah. I think it says the thirteenth, but I know we have a little bit.
Town reports to editor on the thirteenth.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah.
Two different, one day. Well, hey, maybe there's no wiggle room, just, but I think you still go with the deletion in there of, uh.
Well, we're not, we're not, um, we are not coming to a decision on the, uh, the warrant until the twenty-fifth. And that has to get into the town report.
Doesn't.
Right?
The report of the finance committee is where we put the warrant. So, we kinda finish up the, the booklet piece, book, and the report a little bit sooner than the report of the finance committee. Finance committee will finish up the week of the eighteenth.
That's in the insert.
That's the insert.
Okay.
Put the warrant in the insert, and we can finish up a little later on that.
Well, I think.
Well, let's, 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 let's aim for next week. We get it in, we get it in, but for the time being, we delete the location.
Right.
And let's leave it at that. So we're gonna delete the location, um, we can vote on that, if you want. Why don't we vote on that, at least?
Okay, I move that we delete the location as enumerated in the annual town report.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion remains second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? And I'll put this on the agenda for, uh, approval of where we're gonna meet, and if we get it into the annual town report, we get it into the annual town report. It's probably, it's probably very possible. I don't, I don't see where they're gonna have a final final.
You know who does the print, still them guys in Adams?
I don't know.
Esselstier's.
They do it?
Esselstier does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that helps a lot. Okay, Ken? You're up one more time.
One more time, and I only have a very brief report, Mr. Chairman, and I have pictures worth a thousand words, so you get a little bit of that. And, um, after we met last week, remember, I said we should subdivide that lot over there?
Yeah.
Well, by golly, we did that, six years ago.
We did, oh, when we did that, okay.
Yeah, I don't know who we're talking about.
Before, prior, we did it when we thought we were gonna auction it.
Yep. And we wanted to retain the Who's house, we cut the rest of it loose.
That's right. So, originally, in two thousand and eight, we had this here. And then when we were gonna, thought we were gonna, this is the so-called White House, it's right here. So, uh, when we thought we were gonna auction the property, we subdivided it.
Yep.
And now, what we didn't do, because subsequently, you'll probably remember, the historic commission asked to use it, and we pulled it off the auction block. So, we never filed the Mylar with the registry of deeds like we were supposed to. This was, well, this doesn't really prove by the planning board, but it's signed off as a subdivision not requiring planning board approval.
Who signed it?
Uh, Dick Led.
Ah, yeah, old Dick.
Now, believe it or not, we didn't know where this Mylar was, I thought it was upstairs with the planning board, and Becky came downstairs and found the Mylar in your office with all the plans we have. So tomorrow, this is, this is gonna go to the regi- the Mylar has to be filed at the registry of deeds, and it'll go to the registry and be filed.
Well, I tell you.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, just, yeah, it's always decent order, if we wanna, but to rehab that house right in that location on, uh, Piers, I think it's borderline ludicrous, but.
Yeah, it might end up being a tear down.
I think this, if in fact, the, uh, adapt this, John, you probably got things to add to this, but, I mean, that's gotta be relocated, and I don't see any market, whether free or free labor, that anybody wants a house that's on Piers.
It won't, it would be on a, it would be on a foundation.
Maybe they.
Probably a slab. It would, it would definitely, it would.
Well, then, then they oughta just tear it, they really oughta tear it down and move the slab over here.
Well, they, they do wanna go, Habitat wants to go over and view this anyways. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know what, what they would do, that's, that's up to their experts.
Okay, yeah, that's not.
If in fact, they were able to, uh, propose this property and get this property, uh, I don't know what they would do.
But it would make sense that, that, you know, the house would end up.
Yeah, I think this guy here, I could be wrong about this, but just visual observation, casual observer, he, he is using.
Part of the driveway.
Our, our property. So that's another issue. Uh, setback requirements, I think, well, this has to be fifteen or twenty feet, depending on the zone. They probably would make that.
This looks like it's thirteen right now.
Yeah. So that'd be a close call, but I think it's only fifteen in ours, R three, which is just what.
Is R three, right, Ken?
R three.
Yeah, but it definitely should go over here.
Yes, yeah.
And maybe, it, it's big enough for some kind of multifamily housing, apartments, uh, market rate apartments, which, you know. Cause it's big.
More than likely, if in fact Habitat takes us.
Yeah.
It's a single family home. That's what, that's what.
Build that multifamily house up this year.
That's what their, that's what their, that's what their preliminary plan is, let's put it that way. If in fact, they're able to get this.
Yep.
So. That's great. So, from this point.
It's been done, so, yay.
So from this point, what happens after it's registered?
Well, if I'm the registry of deeds, then I think our, I think our attorneys have to draw up a meets and bounds description to be filed along with it, so we know what we're conveying.
Yeah.
That's the next step. And while we're doing that, we can work on the, um.
A setback, fifteen feet.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, so I think it's fif- it's fifteen.
Thank you.
It's fifteen.
Well, it's also just ugly to have it right on the edge.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'd kinda be opposed to that.
Yeah, I don't.
It'd have to be a tear down and a re- relocation, or it seems like it should.
I personally think the building's in bad shape.
Oh, it's horrible.
I'm, I'm sure that we're gonna concur with that.
Okay.
Yeah. What else you got for us?
That's it.
That's it.
If anyone has any questions about any, any project.
Further questions with, with Ken on the, on the White House, or any other projects that?
Where'd you say you found that, Ken?
This was upstairs in the planning board files. Mylar was down in our office, where the map filed.
Good finding.
In our office, yeah.
We were just on the edge of doing the whole thing again?
Right.
And, and just to be clear to everyone that might be watching, part of this, it's the White House that's on Gulf Road.
That's it.
That we're talking about.
Sixteen Gulf Road.
That we're talking about positively destroying.
Not sixteen hundred Pennsylvania, sixteen Gulf Road.
Crazy as it may sound, the house they're rehabbing on East Ute Towne Street. The guy died, his name was Tom White, and he's referred to as the White House in the neighborhood. By the way, as, she, uh, John and I were here for a preliminary ceremony on Friday.
Yes.
And, uh, they're prepared to hand over the keys, I think.
Late April, early May.
So it's coming.
Good.
Looks really good on the inside.
It's amazing, they've got, that home has three, three bedrooms, two baths, um, and the downstairs is kind of a, how would you describe it?
It was circular.
It's circular, it's, but it's kinda open, an L open shape. I mean, it's not, it's, it's not the biggest, I think it's thirteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet. And their project this weekend to kick off, uh, Women's Build Month or Day.
Yeah, Women's.
Was to paint the entire inside, prime it, and then finish coat. And it really looks nice, it really does. Take a look at it? Again, since they painted? Looks very nice.
Yeah, it's a great work, outstanding work.
It's good, and it's all volunteer work, and I was told, yeah, since we're on this subject, um, that the number of volunteer hours was, right to date, is thirty-five-hundred-and-fifty-six volunteer hours into that house. And they still have a ways to go.
With that design, it definitely maximized the utilization of available space.
Yes.
Because it's a small lot.
Yes.
Well, that's the other thing, too, that, I mean, if, if in fact, they did something similar to the White House, or they, they just don't have to put a ranch in, they could, they could go up. Cause they built that one from scratch, they tore that house out and built up.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah.
They, they saved the foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
But they had to repair that, too, it was old stone foundation, so, it almost was something ground up. Great job.
Yeah. Okay, you're all set? Okay, items for future agendas, there's not much of a change, and I'm, unless you have any additions to my list, uh, I'm gonna put the senior center back on next week, and then, uh, the additional upcoming ta- tax costs for the town, which coincides with our debt, uh, analysis, right, for next week. Um, I may be even able to put something on about spectrum cable license update, cause there has been some type of work done on that, and I'll let you know next week if there is. Um, and I think that's about it for the time being.
Can I just make, what, kind of, regarding the Who's house?
Yes.
The tourist information sign?
Yes.
Evidently, according to Ken and our latest communicate from the DOT, that we can't put up an informational sign.
Yeah.
But I don't see what prevents us from putting a sign up that points up Park Avenue on the embankment of the cemetery.
Well, to, to, to that point, um, that has been approached by, uh, Tom Snyder, who's that has been approached by Tom Snyder, who's a member of the Historical Commission. He's talked with Ken, Building Inspector, Traffic Commission, and the Highway Department, and it's more than likely what's going to take place.
Right, because it's already an existing sign directional to this Ashlight Cemetery.
Yes. I'm not sure how that's going to go, but when it does come up, or when it comes to closer, probably when the weather is a little bit better, I'll report on that. And I think that's about it right now. And as soon as we have more on the White House, that'll be on the agenda as well. And hopefully, we'll get that finished by end of April. You think?
What's that?
The end of April, White House, kind of a...
Now that we've got the subdivision done, we just got to get the meets and bounds.
Okay.
The attorneys can crank that out for us then.
Okay. It may be doable.
It's realistic.
Realistic, okay. It's a realistic day.
As we get through this month, I'll have some time to work on other things.
Okay. All right. Remarks of the Select Board. Any from members? I was going to talk about the Husatonix Street House, but we already did that. So that was my main remark. It is wonderful to see that transformation of that property, and the joy that the future homeowners face, knowing that she's this close to moving her and her family into that into that home, and very exciting. I think it's great for them all. So other than that, why don't we go to announcements? Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which went into effect on November 15, 2018, and will be in effect until April 15, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment at the Dalton Town Hall, when available, and at the Dalton Senior Center every fourth Thursday of the month, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. To reserve time at the Dalton Senior Center, please call 413-684-2000. For further information or to schedule other appointments, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home phone number of 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Town Hall, and from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members. If interested, contact the Town Manager's Office at 684-6111, extension 11. I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. May I have a motion, John?
Oh, yes, I move that we... I may want these motions long term. I move that we adjourn to executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, highway associate, patrol officers, highway superintendent, police sergeant, highway foreman. Note, Chairman must declare an open meeting to deter potential non-union opposition and return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion remains second. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Hollum?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels, yes, we are adjourned.